Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull number 12, which reads, "Consideration of City Hall Site and Begin Design Process." I'd like to note that we do have a public meeting scheduled tomorrow, April 16th, at 5:30. That'll take place at the fire station. I'd also request that we add the City Hall site agenda item to the April 29th special meeting.
Okay, staff, can you make note of that, please? Anything else? Mayor. City Administrator Holland.
I'd like to make the addition to add Dave Ramstad, introduction of city planner.
That'll be between items seven and eight?
Yes, yes, please.
Anything else to come before the council?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we'll have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the City Council minutes of April 1st, the City Council's special meeting minutes of April 8th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of April 8th, council payable report March 29 through April 10th, and for council's acceptance, the Park and Recreation Board minutes of March 20th, building report for the month of March, and council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board meeting summary of March 27th, and the City Hall Task Force meeting summary of April 1st.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items as presented. Council? Councilmember Alvarado.
I would like to pull letter C, please.
Letter C, yes?
Wilmer Municipal Utility Board Minutes.
Anyone else? With the exception of item C, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Item number C, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make the public aware of the outstanding utility service that we have in Wilmer. They've received two awards, American Public Power Association Safety Award of Excellence for Safe Operating in 2018, and they're going to be awarded at the Governor's Safety Awards Meeting, Minnesota Safety Council Recognition. And I think that's good to be recognized for good things. Thank you to your team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve the letter C, Wilmer Municipal Utility Board Minutes of April 8, 2019.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board Minutes of April 8th. Additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
No, sorry, that's fine.
Additional comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, city administrator, Mr. Holland.
I would just like to have an introduction tonight of our newest employee. Two weeks ago, the city council approved the hiring of Dave Ramstad. He is replacing Bruce Peterson. Several weeks ago, he interviewed and did very well in the interview and has a very impressive background. We're very fortunate to have him on board. Today, I met with him and I talked way too long. I think I went two hours with him today, so he knows all about Wilmer and the past two years that I've been here. And we talked about what his job will entitle and the challenges that he will have. And he's looking forward to moving here. He told me, as soon as he can, and his family. But I've asked him to come here tonight and maybe just say a few words about your background and if the council has any additional questions for him.
Mr. Ramstad, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Administrator Holland. I appreciate it. And council members and mayor, thank you very much for hiring me. I appreciate it very much. My family is very excited to move to Wilmer. I previously served as a department head with the City of LA City in North Dakota, and then I served 11 years with the Department of Housing and Urban Development as a construction analyst and appraiser. I've been involved in probably about $4 billion worth of development over my career. And I'm looking very, very much forward to serving the city of Wilmer. I think there's tons of possibilities here. And I really, I really enjoy, and what really attracted me, actually, and my family, was the diversity of Wilmer. And I think that is something to really cherish and something to really exploit and make into something, so.
Excellent. Council, any questions for Mr. Ramstad? City Administrator Holland.
I don't have a question, but I think it's important. I didn't mention that he has a degree in architecture. And so, we talked about the new city hall and the design and all that, and I think that his ideas and suggestions will be very helpful as we go through this process. So that's another added benefit. That didn't cost the city anything, so. There you go.
That's true. I have probably 10, 15 years of experience in the architectural field in New York City. I have two degrees in architecture. I have a PhD in public policy administration. So hopefully, I can bring all these things to the city in a great way.
Great.
Welcome. We're very glad you're on board. I had an opportunity to meet you at City Hall today, so nice to see you getting out. And I know Gary gave you the nickel tour of the city, so I'm sure that that was very well done. Gary does a great job for us as well, so. But thank you, welcome aboard, and we look forward to your expertise and the wisdom that you bring to the table, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. We're glad you're on board. Next, we have open forum. First off, we'll call on John Heron to come and talk about an opportunity within our city.
Thank you, Mayor, council. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilor Alvarado for recognizing our safety award at the commission there. Staff takes safety very seriously. I'm John Heron, out of town, general manager of Wilmer Municipal Utilities, also very instrumental in the community and Vision 2040. And I'd like to invite the council as well as the community. In fact, I challenged the community to fill our convention center as well as Little Crow Golf Course meeting room. We're hosting, Vision 2040 is hosting an international speaker, Doug Griffiths. He's a consultant and he helps communities thrive and grow. Title of his presentation is 13 Ways to Kill Your Community. However, no one wants to kill their community, so we invite everybody to come and learn all the ways that we can ensure our community thrives. Two presentations, for those that can't make it at noon, one will be at noon at the Wilmer Convention Center. If you want lunch, there's a $15 charge for lunch. You don't have to have lunch, you can just come and take in Doug's presentation. We also have the same day, May 16th, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, Little Crow Resort and Golf Course. If you can't make the afternoon, we would like to see that filled as well. So this is for Kandy High County, Wilmer Lakes area, so everyone's invited. And we would like to ask that everybody share this presentation with their friends, family, business associates. So we look forward to having the place filled. So like seeing you guys, the council there as well. So if there's any questions, otherwise, I'll keep moving.
Great.
Thank you.
We traditionally don't take any questions, I know, on this one. It would probably be good to ask some, but we'll stay with our practice, so thank you. Thanks for presentation. Next, we have Mr. Stefan DeLasky.
Stefan DeLasky, and I do live in the city of Wilmer. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to basically ask a few questions, no answers, regarding the city hall. I haven't seen a lot about it, but apparently picking a position or a spot over by the fire department. Number one question is, why aren't you partnering with utilities? They need a new building. They've got all kinds of space along East Highway 12. Number two, there's plenty of property downtown near the current city hall. You've got the Masonic Building parking lot, you've got the lot on the south side of your place. You've got a lot of infrastructure there already, utilities, fiber and everything like that. The basement of the county building has a lot of space, it's empty. There's services that you are using at City Hall that could be mirrored over there, servers, space for engineering and such. And technological trends are not really supporting the need for more space in businesses. Even my industry is downsizing. Things we used for the last 20 years are all of a sudden changing. And I'm sure it's the same way with city, city hall, administration and such. Technology allows us to spread out more. Now, blizzard last week, a lot of people were working from home. Kids were going to school from home, using iPads and such. And you've got your basement, mid-Minnesota, says it's cold down there. Maybe they found a different place, there's a lot more room in that basement of that building. Loss of rent will be a lot less than a new mortgage. And then, that building, I think, was built in the 1950s, and if anybody says that's an old building, most of us were built in the 50s, so it'd be an insult to say that we're old and no longer useful. And that fire hall space, watching the news today and watching that church burn in Paris, wonders why they don't have more infrastructure and what's coming for Wilmer. Are people going to build bigger buildings? Are we going to need more space, more emergency personnel space? And that space for fire trucks to exit out of there and get onto the highways and the corridors that they need to travel would seemingly be very important. And it sounds like there's something going on tomorrow at the fire hall, so I'll see you there. And the fact that we put a lot of stickers on that map last fall, and I don't recall the fire hall being one of them, so. See you there tomorrow.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Dirk Mulenerz.
This'll be fun.
You, too.
I'm Dirk Mulenerz, and my family has owned downtown property for 66 years and residences in the city for 51 years. Thank you for allowing me three minutes to speak on a replacement possibility for City Hall that I'm very passionate about, one that I thought about a lot. It's a possibility that was considered, at least partially, by the council almost two years ago. In fact, all members of the council and the mayor at the time did a walkthrough of one of the buildings involved on July 17th of 2017. The possibility, as we'd be suggesting, isn't far away at all from the current City Hall, but served Wilmer well for more than 50 years. The current city hall is located on a portion of downtown that would suffer further if City Hall were to move. It's certainly possible that a City Hall move would also be an instigator for the county to move its remaining operations and personnel from the adjacent block, destabilizing the southwest portion of historic downtown even more. I emailed the City Hall replacement possibility to the full council and media on April 5th. I did so after having shared developing ideas with members of the City Hall Task Force in weeks prior. The email contained the first draft of the presentation that I've since updated to share here today. As I've updated the presentation since April 5th, each new version was emailed to the council and media as well. So, all that said, the City Hall replacement possibility involves mainly the combination of two 100 by 150-foot back-to-back downtown properties, the historic City Auditorium Building and the Hardware Hank Building and its adjacent parking lot. Let's get into some details as we take a look at the poster I brought with me that are also shown on the screens and in front of all of you, from what I understand. The top picture on the poster focuses on the south elevation of the building's exteriors as it currently exists in scale. This is the side where I believe the main entrance should be located. The auditorium is on the left and Hardware Hank on the right. With each building being 150 foot in length, together they extend the entire 300 width of the block, perimeter sidewalk to perimeter sidewalk. Middle picture, in the middle picture, you see that something has been added in the center. It's a new City Hall-appropriate grand entrance. The new grand entrance straddles the center point of the south elevation of the two buildings, allowing access to each from the other. We'll get into more details on this entrance addition in a bit, hopefully. You'll also notice revisions to the Hardware Hank Building. Windows are changed or added on second floor. They modernize the building's look, they add daylight to the upstairs interior in addition to current windows and skylights that are already in the building. The window changes and additions are easily possible, given the precast concrete wall sections that comprise the exterior of the Hardware Hank Building. These wall sections are quite thick, durable, and internally insulated, but new openings can be cut into them by industrial saws. My additional note on windows on the Hardware Hank Building is a suggestion to maximize windows on second floor and, for security, minimize them on first floor, as is currently the case. Now let's look at the bottom picture. The bottom picture is a map in the same scale of the most south, 2/3 of the block. The Hardware Hank property in the upper right hand of the bottom picture is 15,000 square foot, includes a parking lot with a 6,000 square foot footprint currently striped for 15 vehicles, a building with a footprint of 9,000 square feet. What's that?
You ran out of time.
Okay, all right. The full presentation is in your packets. Thank you.
We do have an opportunity tomorrow night at the fire station. It'll be a public, open house, basically, and you are certainly welcome to attend that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Robert Stone.
My name's Robert Stone, and I sit on the City Hall Task Force, Wilmer Fire Department Station, I guess, committee. So we had a meeting last week, or this last week, on Tuesday, very well perceived, got some good input, was very constructive, and, you know, had some forward thinking in it that evolved and, I guess, was met without opposition in a, I guess, a palatable way. Prior to that, the week prior, some of the firefighters had met with less than, had some concerns, I guess, and those concerns were dotted down. I was happy to report that all of the concerns were brought forward, you know, and not sifted through to highlight the ones that were presentable. And I think that I'm getting a lot of the information. Was able to somewhat correct concerns and make the site usable, you know, as of right now. So, again, just want to touch on that we have a public meeting tomorrow, welcome the input on it. Again, want to make it for the best for the city of Wilmer and look forward to the growth.
Thank you for your comments. Next item on the agenda is Public Works, Public Safety. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works, Public Safety did meet on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019, at the City Hall. I do believe everybody was present that night, including Public Works Director Sean Christensen, the police chief, fire chief, as well as all the committee members, myself, Councilwoman Osmus, Councilwoman Nelson, and Councilwoman Alvarado. After calling to order, we did take item number two for information, and that was public safety statistics, which is included in our packet. And I don't believe Chief Felton is here tonight to comment on those, but we did ask, you know, if there were any notable items within those packets, and there were no substantial changes or items, but if there are concerns, the council can ask at this time. All right, seeing and hearing nothing further, I'll move on to item number three, which also requires a resolution, so it was an action item. Staff did bring forth for approval, award for the 2019 Crack Seal and Seal Coat Projects. Eight quotes were received for the Crack Seal Project 1906, with the lowest from Camco Inc. in the amount of $18,000. Four quotes were received for the Seal Coat Project, number 1908, with the lowest from Asphalt Surface Technologies in the amount of $36,305.40. And we are going to do this in two, I believe. Motion was made and seconded, awarding the project number 1906 to Camco Inc. in the amount of $18,000, and authorized signatures on the 2019 Crack Seal contract, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve award project number 1906 to Camco Inc. in the amount of $18,000. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second motion was made and seconded rather, to award project number 1908 to Asphalt Surface Technologies in the amount of $36,305.40, and authorized signatures on the 2019 Seal Coat Contract, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award project number 1908 to Asphalt Surface Technologies. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That did take care of the Crack Seal and Seal Coat bid awards. The next item that will also be an action item was a cooperative construction agreement with Kandy High County. Staff brought forth for approval the cooperative construction agreement with Kandy High County for project number 1903C and County State Aid Highway 5, County State Aid Highway 15 Roundabout Project. Project number 1903C calls for the overlay of 19th Avenue Southwest from First Street to County State Aid Highway 5. The roundabout project will take place at the intersection of County State, Highway, County State Aid Highway 15 and County State Aid Highway 5. The cost of city construction items are provided in Exhibit A of the agreements. Motion was made and seconded to approve the cooperative construction agreement with Kandy High County in the amount of $206,071.12 for project 1903C, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the cooperative agreement with Kandy High County for project 1903-C. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second action item to go along with that was a motion that was made and seconded to approve the cooperative construction agreement with Kandy High County in the amount of $104,401 for County State Aid Highway 5 and County State Aid Highway 15 Roundabout. The motion carried, and I will enter that now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the cooperative agreement with Kandy High County in the amount of $104,401 for the County State Aid Highway 5 and County State Aid Highway 15 Roundabout. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes as well. For those of us that have been on the council a while, you'll recognize the familiar numbers that come up from Mel, so the 104, 401, those were very consistent in his numbering systems. I think Mr. Oakins would probably remember that as well, so. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final item on our agenda, staff did bring forth for approval the purchase of a portable generator for the wastewater treatment facility. There's currently only one generator to supply power to 21 of the 24 lift stations during a power outage. The purchase of an additional generator will reduce the city's vulnerability as well as liability during these weather events or potential system failures. After reviewing the two quotes received, staff chose the generator from Ziegler, as it has the specifications more fitting of the department's needs. And we did have some discussion about this, because I do believe it was slightly more expensive, but in going through the list of specifications and the various warranty items and whatnot, it was deemed that this was the better piece of equipment, and it did fit within our, within our plan. A motion was made and seconded, and that was to approve the purchase of the CAT Tier 4 portable diesel generator from Ziegler Power Systems in the amount of $66,552.05, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase from Caterpillar from Ziegler Power Systems in the amount of $66,552.05. Mr. Scott, our city attorney, does the explanation given meet the intent of the law to purchase the higher-priced product?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. For a purchase of this amount, which is under the competitive bidding threshold, the city's obligation is to get at least two quotes. It does have discretion to evaluate the quotes, is not required to choose the lowest-priced quote, if there's justification to choose the higher one, as in this case.
But my understanding is we have to clearly articulate why we chose the higher one, and we've done that, correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when this isn't in use, where is it stored, then? At the waste treatment plant, or the old plant, or Public Works, or? Okay, thank you.
So the answer from staff was that one would be sitting at each plant. Right now, currently, one sits at the current wastewater treatment facility, but the thought was that may have been moved to the actual wastewater treatment facility west of town. Additional conversations. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no further business to come before our committee that evening. We adjourned at 6:22, and I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file amendments. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have Finance Committee report of April 4th. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet on April 4th, and the following members, myself, Rick Fagerly, Councilmember Plowman, and Julie Osmus, Councilmember, were also there. Others present were Mr. Oakins, our Finance Director, and Mr. Baumgart, our Park and Rec Director, along with the West Central Tribune reporter Shelby. We did not have public comment, and we had eight items that were brought forward for approval, and I will start with the first one, which was the Industrial Development Fund. Staff explained that the, in the budget process, there was a project for the industrial park that was estimated to bring in $700,000 in revenue. That was adopted in December, and since that time, that project is not moving forward. This is considered a material amount in nature, and it was so, it was recommended that the budget be reduced, and attempt to reflect the activity will be moving forward in 2019. After discussion, it was moved and seconded to introduce a resolution to reduce the 2019 budget by 700,000, and I will enter that resolution now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to make a budget amendment in the amount of $700,000 reduction. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next item was the bike share budget, and that is a resolution also. We did have information on the budget, and we did apply for some grants. There was a reduction in one of the grants, and the budget had not been adopted, and so receiving that information after discussion and reviewing of the budget, we did make a motion and a second to introduce a resolution to adopt the 2019 Bike Share Program budget of $69,240, and that is attached. I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjust the bike share budget from $10,000, or by $10,000 up to $69,240. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The third item was the Civic Center Wheelchair Lift Project, and staff brought forth the information that the Civic Center has never had a wheelchair lift in the, in the actual arena. This will be placed, with the change in the bleacher project, into the handicap session, and we had received two quotes to install the wheelchair lift, and the low bidder was Arrow Lift for $25,990. The project is included in the 2019 Capital Improvements Program and is within the scope of the budget. And after, we had a motion and a second to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute an agreement with Arrow Lift to install a wheelchair lift in the Cardinal Arena in the amount of $25,990, and I will introduce that resolution now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the expense of $25,990 for a lift at the arena. Councilmember Nelson, do you know what was in the CIP for that amount? It's not listed on this report.
I, just a second here, might be on this one. I do not. Mr. Okens?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the entire bleacher replacement was budgeted at $300,000. There was a secondary item for the wall replacement that was budgeted for an additional $50,000. The bleachers, the council approved at your last meeting, came in at $200,000, so this would be part of that 300,000, so there would still be dollars left to go towards the other items that are on the agenda.
Okay. One of the things that we'd ask is in the future that they be included in the, in the car reports, so just as a reminder to staff. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next item is the Civic Center Wall Project in the Cardinal Arena, and that's a resolution also. And staff explained that, to the committee, that the Cardinal Arena has one-inch foam insulation covered with plastic, and over time, those panels have yellowed and have holes and are cracking. These panels were roughly 20 to 25 years old. Two bids were received for this project with cornerstone construction as the low bidder is of $55,115. This project was included in the 2019 Capital Improvements Program and is in, within the scope of the budget. After discussion, it was moved and seconded to authorize the mayor and city council, city administrator, to execute an agreement with Cornerstone Construction to install new walls in the Cardinal Arena for $55,115, and I do not believe that, the question you asked before, that we have that information either. I don't know if Mr. Baumgart has that information, or if Mr. Okens does, but I would enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, staff, do we have that number or not?
Mayor, members of the councils, the whole, the whole project for the bleachers and the wall project was $350,000.
Well, now our math isn't working any longer. So, if you had 300,000, we spent 200,000, we spent 50,000, we spent 20,000, and I believe we said we spent 60,000, that comes over 300,000.
I think he said it was 350. I was just looking to see.
We said 350.
I thought Mr. Baumgart said that.
Yep, 350,000.
Oh, 350. Okay, I heard you wrong, I'm sorry, it's my mistake. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Item number six is Our Courts, Our Future Program Resolution. Staff presented a request to apply for Our Courts, Our Future Grant through the Minnesota Timberwolves Fast Break Foundation. This is the third year of the court refurbishment project, which restores four community courts throughout the summer across Minnesota. Staff noted that the basketball court at Miller, at Miller Park is outdated, and the court needs to be resurfaced, and the hoop should be replaced. With the improvements that we have already been completed, the new playground and tennis courts, this would be an ideal location. Further, it would provide another opportunity by adding programming at Miller Park. After discussion, a motion was made and seconded to authorize the mayor and city council to submit, city administrator to, to submit an application to the Minnesota Timberwolves Fast Break Foundation for Our Courts, Our Future Program, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant for the Timberwolves Fast Break Foundation. Additional discussion. Councilmember Meske.
Does this grant have a matching element to it, or do the Timberwolves cover the whole cost of the project? They cover the whole project. Yep, we've actually got good news today, too. They called us up, and they said they're going to come out to look at Miller Park. Awesome.
Great news. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meske?
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I apologize I missed an item. It is Civic Center Wall Painting Project. There were three projects there, I apologize, in the Cardinal Arena, and this is a resolution. Staff explained to the committee that the walls that were being constructed that we passed before will need to be painted as well. Three quotes were received for this project, and M&amp;M Painting and Construction was the low bidder for $25,490. This project was also included in the 2019 Capital Improvements Program and is in, within the scope of the budget. After discussion, it was moved and seconded to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute an agreement with M&amp;M Painting and Construction to paint the new walls in the Cardinal Arena for $25,490, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve contract to, for labor and materials in the amount of $25,490 for painting at the Cardinal Arena. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Item number seven was a request from the Curling for Grant. The staff presented a request to apply for various grants offered by the state of Minnesota and the federal government to construct a new facility for the Curling Club. If the council grants this request, the city of Willmar will work with the Glacial Ridge Curling Club and Senator Lang's office on any and all grants that may apply to help in building the new curling facility. The estimated cost of the building is currently about 2.4 million; however, that may change after the architectural and engineering design is complete. After discussion, it was, a motion was made and seconded to authorize city staff to work with the Glacial Ridge Curling Club and Senator Lang's office in applying for grants offered by the state of Minnesota and federal government, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve or to authorize staff to work with the Curling Club to apply for grants offered on a state or federal basis. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Item number eight is the acknowledgement of donations received. It is our policy to acknowledge and donations received on a quarterly basis, and so this is for the time period of January 1st through March 31st. The following donations were received: $1,500 from the Willmar Elks Lodge Number 952 for the Willmar Police Explorers account, and $4,000 from Greg and Linda Hansen for the value to sandblast prime and powder coat the airport beacon. After discussion, it was moved and seconded to formally accept the donations as stated above, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to acknowledge donations for first quarter 2019. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Schwantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight A's, zero N's.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson, do you know was, were letters sent on behalf of the council?
Yes, it states in here that the letters were sent, and that is done immediately upon the receipt of the donations, we were told, so.
Thank you. I don't see that on the, maybe in the narrative, but it's not on the.
It's on the, in the minutes.
It's not on the council action report. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Is that something that you want?
No, I was just asking.
Okay. All right. That concludes our items that we needed motions on. The next items are for, were for information and discussion. Mr. Baumgart brought forward a request for us to have an open discussion on where to find additional funding on the Four Seasons Shelter at Robins Island. We received a legacy grant from the DNR. The dollars that were awarded and the local match are not enough to cover the cost of the shelter that is being proposed. That grant is due on June 20th, and during the Parks and Recreation Board meeting, there was a motion to have Ingen and associate, associates adjust and present more detail of their drawing for the proposed shelter, and to have staff research additional funding possibilities. We had a discussion regarding that. It is my understanding that the Parks and Recs Board will be reviewing that on Wednesday. Staff is looking for options, and it was a request that this be put on our work session for the council to be reviewing the, what the Park and Rec Board would be bringing forward, and then we could follow up with additional funding options. And that was for information only. Questions?
I have a question on that. When the budget was prepared, when this was put together, the mayor had put in $250,000 as a match amount. Staff has made recommendations that that money be used for other things along the way. Do we know, is the $250,000 that the mayor put in the budget still there, or has it been used on other projects, and that's causing the reason that we have to find money now? You know that answer?
I believe Mr. Okens actually has a figure. I don't think there was much that was there. However, the match was actually less than 250. I will let him answer that question, but that is not what is bringing forward the request for additional funds.
Okay. So, that'll come to our work session, then?
Yes, but if Mr. Okens wants to answer that question, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, of the $250,000, the council only re-appropriated $17,000 for the lights at Robins Island. The remaining amount still is earmarked for that project. So, there's roughly $58,000 that's not required as a match at this point that's available. The remaining amount is required to match the $600,000 grant from the legacy dollars.
Okay. I think, I think also, when we had the discussion, we did not feel that the Finance Committee should be looking for, we discussed some amounts, but we felt that the council needed to be presented the scope of the project before we, the Finance Committee would make recommendations for where to find the funds. And I believe that if Mr. Baumgart wants to speak to that, I think that's what his board is doing on Wednesday, is reviewing that, and the, the request was that that item be added on to our work session on the 29th, so that the council can review what the, what the projects are, project is.
So, do we have any idea what dollar amount they're looking for?
I will let Mr. Baumgart ask that, answer that question. I think the information is in the packet with what was brought forward, but there were requests from that board to make adjustments, and so we did not want to address that until they have made their, their recommendation.
Mayor, members of the councils, there's kind of a wide range of prices that could, that we could be asking for, because we still haven't set what we wanted for the shelter. There's a couple of options out there right now that we've been looking at, and hopefully on Wednesday, we can hone down on what option we want to present to the council.
Councilmember Nelson, this is, this is becoming painfully similar to the Rice Park Project, and I'm beginning to have grave concerns over the successful completion of this project. And I'm asking a lot of questions here, because the mayor is no longer involved in this process with the way the new committees are set up, and so it's concerning to me that, first off, I was concerned every time we took money from the budget that the mayor had allocated, knowing that those funds would not have been sufficient to complete that project, and the council, I believe, only approved one, from what we're told this evening. I know there were numerous requests that came to take money from there. There also is, I have heard, requests to take money from the amphitheater project that has money that is sitting in a fund that can be used for other things, and so the council needs to take caution. When the mayor prepares a budget, the mayor has a, has an idea on how projects should proceed, and to take money away from your approved budget that the mayor presented to you is setting us up for not making good fiscal decisions for the council and for the citizens of this community, and it's gravely concerning to me. Councilmember Nelson, you have brought this up numerous times, that we're sitting here with a ticking time bomb, and again, I'll just say, this is looking vastly familiar to the Rice Park Project, where we ended up in the same situation. So, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that your committee's looking into this.
We were brought the request to look for additional funds from Mr. Baumgart. We asked what the process was. It is my understanding that this needs to go before them to make the recommendation for the building. So, the figures that were brought to us were, were in question with, that the Finance Committee shouldn't be making those decisions for the council. The council needs to hear those projects, and that's, I believe, what Mr. Baumgart is planning to do. When we talked about options, if you want to go back and listen to the meeting, Mr. Okens brought forward items out of the CIP that had not been used yet. We also had a discussion about using last year's money that was left over with that. There was also a concern expressed that if we were to use current CIP dollars, that they are projects that should be completed this year. And so, part of the discussion that took place at the Finance Committee was not for the Finance Committee to decide where that money should come from at this time, because we don't know what the amount is going to be that's going to be requested over the budget. Those figures were quite wide in range, and so until the scope of the building is decided, and that was not the, that was not what the Finance Committee was asked to do. It is my understanding, and if there is a different process that needs to be, it was my understanding from Mr. Baumgart that his committee was to bring forth a recommendation on the building, and that simply in the process of them looking at it, it is over the budget that they were asking the Finance Committee to be aware of that and to come up with options. We were not recommending any options.
Councilmember Meske.
Are we going to have a comprehensive look at this on the 29th with all this information?
on the 29th with all this information?
Sounds that way.
So we can have an informed decision with all the pieces of the puzzle together? Or are we still going to have pieces not on the 29th?
It is not coming from Finance. It is going to be coming from Mr. Baumgart. So whatever they are bringing forward, that's where it needs to come from, is the building needs to come from there. If the council agrees on whatever the building's going to be, we know what we have, and if that's our priority to do that building at that price, then it'll come back to the Finance Committee to ask for recommendations to do that.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Osmus?
When we have the special session on the 29th, it would be my hope that we would look at all of those funding sources and have options for that building. If that's the, whatever it is over the budget, to determine as a whole council if that's where we want to put some of those leftover funds and make that decision that evening. Am I not correct?
It's a work session, so it's not a council meeting. And it was my understanding that it was going to be brought forward for us to review what the recommendation was from the Park and Rec Board. And we have asked Mr. Okens to come up with some options for that. So if the council decides that, it would then need to be, a decision would need to be made with where those funds were going to come from. And so the question, you know, what we're going to do one night versus what we're going to do the other night, that's up to the council.
Right. I was just trying to clarify Mr. Mesky's question, because it didn't seem like it was a... I had the same question, and it didn't seem like it was a clear answer. But I think we, on the 29th, we should be able to come up with some funding sources, and if we agree that that's the size building that needs to get funded.
If Mr. Baumgart has any other comments about that, we did have a question of how the procedure was supposed to be moving forward, and it is going back to his group, and it's their recommendation to come to the council. And so as far as building information, I would think they would be bringing forth some options or their recommendation.
That is correct. That's what we're going to do on Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Mesky?
And just a question and clarification. We don't have special work sessions. We don't have work sessions any longer. I'm curious if the 29th, this is the first time we've had it since we've gone to committees, can that be advertised as a special meeting so we can actually have action on the project if all of the pieces are together?
Yes, correct. We could have action on that. That also is the recommendation of Councilmember Schwantus when she canceled the meeting for tonight, the discussion for the City Hall project. I believe that what she asked for, what I heard her say, is that she wanted that to be a special meeting so that action could be possibly taken that night if the council were ready. We could just add this as a second special item. Again, at a special meeting, you can only talk about the items that are advertised. I'm sorry, or announced. Still didn't get the word right, but posted, right? Whatever. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Kelly. We had a brief discussion about the Cambridge Stormwater Project. It was just, a statement was made that it is in our street projects for right now, so unless we want to do something different, we will look for direction for that if it needs to be changed to something outside of our streets. The next item was the Local Option Sales Tax Effective Date. We reviewed this, I think, last time, too. And this information was brought forward to the Local Option Sales Tax Committee. And the hope is that we will come up with a way to communicate to the businesses this process as it moves forward through the legislature. The last items, the wastewater treatment rate study, we will be reviewing in detail at our next meeting. And also, we had a conversation that we will go back to on the tax abatement, tax increment financing. And we also deferred the suspense and agricultural assessments for a future meeting. We reviewed our meeting schedule, and we will be meeting on April 18th. And the items that are expected to be on there are the unaudited financial report, the first quarter 2019 budget amendments, March monthly report, comprehensive assessment policy, unaudited 2018 financial report, and first quarter budget amendments. That was repeated, I apologize, in the minutes. There was no other business to come before the committee, and I would make a motion to enter the minutes at this time.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment, just kind of speak, just to briefly hit on a couple of the points that you had mentioned and a couple of the questions that we discussed. And we discussed this briefly at the meeting, but it was, and this is just my own opinion, but I do agree that when the budget is created, that's kind of our financial roadmap for the year. And that is something that we need to follow and that we need to try our best to follow. And it's obvious that things are going to come up throughout the year that don't fit within those parameters. And that's going to come back to finance in order to finance them properly. However, I did want to discuss it and bring it up, because it can be somewhat arduous at these meetings when it feels like there are a pile of projects stacking up that we're saying, these projects need to be done, go find the money. And when you're trying to follow a roadmap for, well, for budgeting purposes and stick to that roadmap, while also having other projects popping up that we say, go find the money, it's not always quite that easy. And so I just, I want to make sure, at least for myself, and I would hope that others too, but I can only speak on behalf of myself, I would hope that we remain really mindful that you can only do that so much, and there's only so many sources of funding. Now, we can be really creative, and we can be, you know, we can use the expertise that we have with staff, and we can get, you know, we can work things a bunch of different ways, but at the end of the day, money does not grow on trees. And we need to be mindful of the money that we're spending and also of the budget that has been prepared and the plans that have been diligently prepared. And just keep that in mind when we are making these financial decisions. And I am now off my soapbox. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Plowman, I think you bring up a good point. And my point was simply that I've known that this dollar amount was over the amount that was budgeted for probably close to seven or eight months before we went to the new committee process. I knew this number was over. And when the recommendation was to take the money away from the money that I had placed in the budget to pay for something else, even though it's a miniscule amount, as some would say, only $15,000, but I brought that up that night. I brought it up, you know? Are we taking this money away when it should be used for, you know, might be needed for this project? No, we have it covered, Mr. Mayor. Now, coming back, now we're short of money, and, you know, it makes it look like we didn't do our due diligence. Staff, if you recall, had actually asked for that number to be substantially less. And I left the $250,000 in the budget, and you, as a council, approved that. And, you know, so, you know, it used to be every time that we need to find money, we said, when Councilmember Christensen was on the council, we brought up the issue of our building permits, that we had too much money coming in on building permits. Now Councilmember Christensen's no longer here, and that was a hot topic for him. So now we're no longer saying the money comes from there. So it's just, it's just a point that I'm trying to make of, you know, there's ways to find the money. But if we know we have a project that's underfunded, we probably shouldn't be taking money from that project until that project is completed. And I would hope the council would look at that in the future, that if we're taking money on projects that haven't even been approved by you as a council yet, we're taking money away from those projects, we should wait until those projects are finished before we start taking money away from them. That was my point.
Duly noted, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with that, and I would think that each of these projects that comes through, and especially a situation like this, like you said, even if the amount isn't a huge substantial amount, it's more the principle and the procedure and the policy that goes behind it. And in speaking to that, I think that it serves as a great lesson and an example and reminder to all of us that we need to be financially responsible, and we need to be thinking out ahead with consideration of the budget and also considering those items that are going to pop up that are unexpected.
Correct. And I think with the new committee format, the council is going to be more in tune to those numbers. That's a benefit. Councilmember Nelson?
Just if I may, on the comment on the CIP items, I don't think that we should be canceling CIP projects without an explanation with why we are not doing them. And I think that that fits into the figures that you were talking about. But I do, in defense of Mr. Okens, when you're asked to go find the money, you look at what's been worked on and what hasn't been worked on with that, because this is a substantial amount of money that we're talking about. And so I think we need to be aware, when we look at that, that we are analyzing what still needs to be done. But I think Councilmember Plowman makes a good point that we can only do that once. The money's gone after we do that. And so I think that's why we brought the message forward that we did, that we need to know what the project is and what they are bringing forward before we make a recommendation with where the money should come from.
Additional comments? Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Councilmember Fagerly for Community Development report for April 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met at 5:15 on Monday, April 8th. Present was myself, co-chair Vicky Davis, member Sean Muskie, and Kathy Schwantus. Item number two, public comments. No one was there to speak to us. Item three, meeting time change. We had been meeting at 6:15, and labor was at 5:15. Staff would like us to switch, so Community Development will meet at 5:15, and labor at 6:15. So I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to change the meeting times between labor and community development. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you. Item number four, removal of a Planning Commission member. Staff explained that they are hopeful to have a letter of resignation from a Planning Commission member as the individual circumstances have changed and they are unable to attend the meeting. The Planning Commission chair is requesting that the council replace that individual. This item will be brought back to the committee once the letter of resignation has been received. Hopefully, we'll receive that in the next two weeks. Sarah, have we received it yet? Okay.
Mayor members of the council, we just received that letter today.
So will we be dealing with it on Monday then, or?
From my, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that that can just, it's been addressed to the council and the mayor. So we don't actually have to take any action on that. We just need to find that replacement?
That's correct. Mayor members of the council, the council does not need to take formal action to acknowledge the resignation, assuming the resignation letter stated an effective date. It can simply take note that the resignation has occurred and a vacancy exists and take steps to fill the vacancy.
So the mayor can start looking for a member here. All right, thank you. Item five, introduction of tax abatement for AEHM LLC. Staff explained that the LLC purchased the Sunwood apartment complex and has plans to build an additional 24-unit building in addition to the improvements of the interior and exterior in the existing two buildings, which each have 12 units. The LLC requested and was approved an amendment to the existing PUD allowing the expanded construction of a 24-unit building instead of the historically planned third 12-unit building. Planning Commission reviewed review of the PUD request in November of 2018. The public expressed concerns of traffic, property value, property upkeep, garbage, fence, et cetera, and green space. The LLC's request for tax abatement is for 10 years at 90% of the increased tax base and states that the project cannot support itself without tax abatement from the city. The tax abatement policy states that each taxing jurisdiction is separate. So with that, we're asking for a public hearing for?
May 6th.
May 6th. 7:01. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to introduce public hearing for tax abatement for AEHM LLC for May 6th at 7:01 PM. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember?
And with that, I move to file the minutes.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development for April 8th, 2019. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of state temporary liquor permit for Foxhole Brew House. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Foxhole Brew House has plans to sell alcohol during the mayor's bike ride block party on May 17th of 2019. State application and permit for a one- to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license is required to distribute or consume alcohol per state statute. It's staff's recommendation to approve the state application and permit for a one- to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for Foxhole Brew House Incorporated.
Make that motion.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve a temporary, a state temporary liquor permit for Foxhole Brew House for the mayor's bike ride. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly?
So is that after the bike ride?
Yes. And the bike ride is the 17th, and it starts at Robins Island in Wilmer. And again, it'll be New London, Spicer in Wilmer, and then also the Marshall Mayor will be here as well, along with a number of mayors from the metro who are talking of coming out for the event, so. Also, Ms. Swedberg will be talking about her Main Street project, I believe, there as well, along with some other things. But I'm drawing a blank all of a sudden, so. I looked over, and you kind of gave me that look, what are you talking about? So I lost my train of thought, so. Ms. Swedberg, could you kind of come and talk a little bit about what we're talking about doing? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's just fine. Mayor members of the council, myself representing Wilmer Main Street and a couple of members from the Wilmer Parks and Rec Board have been working with the CVB to plan what we're deeming the mayor's bike ride block party. It will be on Fourth Street from Benson to Becker Avenue. And the major portion will be kicking off the bike share program. And then Main Street will be there represented as well. And we'll hopefully actually have a couple artists on Main Street projects already underway that can be seen that night along Fourth Street there. And then we'll have some outdoor games and kids' activities and live music and different things planned as well.
Question?
Councilmember Osmus?
Do we have some times yet? Like when the bike ride starts and what the hours of the block party are going to be?
Remind me when the bike ride starts.
5 o'clock.
5? So the bike ride starts at 5, and then we're anticipating kind of activities and things to start getting going on Fourth Street there at about 5:30, and we'll be there until about 9 on the 17th.
And again, if you participate in the bike ride, you have to sign up with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. But if you sign up through that, then you'll get a token for a meal that will be provided by the CVB if you participate in the bike ride, so. Otherwise, we'll have food trucks and vendors. And again, as Ms. Swedberg has said, you'll go all the way from Becker all the way down to Benson Avenue. So it'll be a very nice event. I believe we're going to have live music, so have a band in there and that type of thing, so. But we're pulling a lot of pieces together under one umbrella. Kind of hit it with a broad stroke, so. Mr. Holland has been heavily involved in this as well on the planning side of it, so. Additional conversation. And again, it's a simple motion, but it's a roll call motion because it is alcohol. So roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next is consideration of on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Tapatio LLC. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my office received a request for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license from the new owner of El Tapatio Mexican Restaurant. Proper documents have been completed and returned to my office, and the police department has given their approval. Staff's recommendation is to approve the Tapatio LLC on-sale intoxicating liquor license.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve Tapatio LLC on-sale intoxicating liquor license. Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Again, this is liquor, it's a motion, but it takes a roll call because it involves alcohol. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next, we have Labor Relations Committee report of April 8th. Councilmember Mesky.
The Labor Committee met on April 8th. I was there. Councilmembers Fagerly, Davis, and Schwantus were there. I won't call Alvarado out, but he was at the final four, enjoying a very wonderful game, and I am just jealous, that's why I bring it up.
Thank you.
All right. We also talked about that meeting time change. Since we've already done that by a vote on the previous one, we are switched now to 6:15 moving forward. The first item that we have for you to consider this evening was the working out of class policy. That requires us to take a look and approve any employee to receive working out of class pay. Staff submitted the pay request for our interim planning and development services director. The interim director should receive out-of-class pay from February 1st, 2019, through April 14th, 2019. And came out of the committee as a motion, a made and seconded, and I'll introduce that motion this evening.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve out-of-class pay for interim planning and development services director. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I want to give a shout out to our interim planning and development services director, Ms. Swedberg, again. Phenomenal job. You did those services very, very well, and I'm sure you're very relieved to have someone in that position now and someone that you can learn a lot from and someone that has a vast experience. But we really appreciate the fact that you stepped up to the plate and served very, very well. So, thank you. Councilmember Mesky.
We also looked at the sick leave policy, and that hadn't been changed for quite a while. And so, we increased the donation amount to 40 hours of sick leave per calendar year, and it allows employees to pledge donation hours before receiving employee exhausts all of their paid leave. It also adds the requirement that employees must leave a minimum of 40 hours in their own sick leave bank if they choose to donate. The maximum sick leave for any one employee, anyone employee can receive, excuse me, I would also increase to 40 days per incident. That comes from committee with the motion and second, and I'll introduce that this evening.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the sick leave donation policy and update it as presented. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Councilmember Mesky.
Warned you the last time that we were coming with policy updates to the personnel manual you will have received. We decided to give you the entire update, and we'll continue to do that as we do this by section, but you just received the first portion. And so, it's the first three pages, including the media relations policy that are presented. It replaces sections 1.2, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 2.1, 2.2, and 2.2 of the personnel policy. I know that sounds like a lot of numbers, but if you take a look at what it really does, it streamlines that personnel policy manual significantly, and it all conforms to the League of Minnesota City's recommended policies. And so, I would move the approval of the first section of these policies with many more to come.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to update the employee personnel policies at the recommendation of committee. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Also, the sick leave donation policy carried as well. Councilmember Mesky.
The last item we did is, we went into closed section, or a closed session pursuant Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B. For those that, you don't have to look it up at home, it is to discuss threatened litigation against the city of Wilmer. So, went into closed session at 6:28 and came back out at 7:07, and we had no other business to come before the committee. So, I would move to file the minutes at this time.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations for April 8th. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have city administrator comments. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, a couple of comments tonight. First of all, you know, about a week ago, we were shoveling snow again, and, you know, Gary's here tonight, and he reported that there was lots of activity, and they saved all of the breakdowns for last weekend over the whole winter. So, they were very busy with equipment and personnel and everything, and, you know, that winter blast was a winter blast. So, I want to congratulate them. Again, they've done a good job this entire winter, but they had one more, you know, battle to fight. So, I just want to pass on congratulations to them and a job well done. Also, I want to mention that May 15th is the city auction for people that are in the community that are interested in purchasing a bicycle. If you can't find a bike there, you're not looking hard enough because we have tons of bikes every year, some vehicles, motorcycles, all kinds of things, and we possibly might have another auction in the fall. But I encourage everyone to come out. We're going to be starting that a little bit earlier, right? 10 o'clock, so, on a Wednesday. So, hopefully, everybody will come out and we can get rid of some of this stuff. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Are we going to get that list? In the past, we've always gotten that list. Will that be coming at the next meeting?
That will be presented at the next council meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Under mayor's announcements, just want to thank our staff for, Public Works particularly, for persevering through the weather that we had. I generally get a few comments about the good job that you guys do, but this year, or this last snow, I got a lot of comments about how you stayed on top of it, you did a very nice job, and even in that heavy, wet snow that's hard to move, you did a good job. So, I'll just echo the comments that the administrator stated. So, if you can pass that to your staff, we'd appreciate that. Also, I just want to encourage the public to come out to the public open house tomorrow to hear about the fire station location for the new city hall. I have received a lot of phone calls in regards to this, and what I'd ask you to do is come with an open mind and listen to the presentation, because as a lot of people have said to me, you know, we didn't even know this was a consideration, and how did this come to the table? And again, this is a recommendation that was brought to the table by Mr. Holland, our city administrator, and said, "You haven't looked at this site. Why haven't you looked at this site? It's a site that the city owns." And so, I think a lot of us going into that process were thinking, "Well, this site isn't even going to make it." I mean, it's going to make it one day, and that's it. But at the end of the day, you'll see the information presented tomorrow night that it came as the top site recommendation from the council, or from the committee, I should say. And so, that is there. The other thing I just want to make the public aware of is that the mayor's pro-breakfast will be on May 2nd out at the conference center, and that will be, serving will start, breakfast will start at 6:30 in the morning, and we'll have you out of there no later than 8 o'clock. And this year's presenter is Brian Orston, and those of you that follow the news will remember he was the individual that was involved in the explosion out in Benson where the house blew up. And so, he will be the presenter. So, again, thank you guys for all the work you do, and thanks to our staff for the good work they do as well. Council announcements, I'll start with councilmember Davis.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going into spring. I'm very excited about new growth and what's happening in our community and around town, and everybody's pretty excited about being part of Wilmer, so let's keep it going. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmas.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Plowman.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank our new employee for coming here tonight and joining us. Should be a good addition. And I'm going to put you on the spot now, because Sarah didn't give me any signal, do we have any items for Monday? We do. 5:15, community development. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Pass.
Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you. Since folks have been invited to the city hall task force open meeting, I won't belabor that, but we do hope to see you there. If you would like to reduce your energy costs, whether you are an individual and you have a home, or if you are a business owner, we have a meeting taking place on April 24th. It's at 8 o'clock in the morning till 9:30 in the morning. It's taking place at McRock, the Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center located on the Midwest Technology Campus. This is being put on by Main Street, the Municipal Utilities, Candy Co-op Power, CERTS, which is a clean energy resource team in the University of Minnesota, and we'll have a variety of speakers talking about how you can reduce your energy costs, rebates that might be available, and if anyone is on District 8, this would be of particular interest to you. So, hope you can make it. If you are interested in attending, we would appreciate you pre-registering. Sarah, is that on the city website at all? Well, you let Sarah or I know, and we'll make sure that you get a seat reserved, so hope to see you there.
I believe that it was on the city Facebook site. I think I saw it there. Would that have been possible? I think I saw it there two weeks ago.
I'll make sure it's on the website.
Thank you.
And I would note that it's a free offering to the public, so.
Okay. Thank you for everybody for your comments. We are now going to go into closed session of the city council. An agenda item is threatened litigation from a former city of Wilmer employee related to the individual's employment with the city. This portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D.05 sub 3B. The city's need for absolute confidentiality outweighs the purposes served by the open meeting law in this case based on the following. The city council and legal council need to have a candid and open discussion to determine the available legal options to handle the threatened litigation from a former Wilmer city, city of Wilmer employee related to employment with the city based on actions the city has already taken, including response strategy and possible areas of reconciliation. The purpose of the closed meeting is to not make a decision behind closed doors, but instead, the purpose of the meeting is to determine the legal options for handling the threatened litigation. The only business to be discussed is the threatened litigation. An open session would be detrimental because it takes place in the presence of individuals involved in the threatened litigation. A closed session would benefit the public because the ultimate outcome of the threatened litigation may impact the finances, operations, and reputation of the city. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting, but prior to doing that, for those watching, the only action that will be taken by the council at the conclusion of this meeting is to adjourn, so the tape will stop at the motion and second to go into closed session.